Good evening, this is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Waterville City Council. There are agendas available on the table, near the entrance or online at the city's website. Consent agenda items are routine items which are voted on in one motion and vote. Unfinished or new business items are voted on separately. Councillors will be given an opportunity for questions, comments, questions or comments, followed by citizens who must speak at the podium and identify themselves. Citizens will be allowed to speak one time per agenda item for up to three minutes. Citizens who wish to speak on a topic that does not appear on tonight's agenda will have the opportunity to do so during public comment section of the agenda for up to three minutes. First up is our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. All right, this being the first meeting of the year for us, Happy New Year to everybody. The first thing that we're going to do is the administrations of Oaths of Office. Patty, where would you like to do that?
If Mr. Gillie and Ms. Harard could join me at the podium, please.
Thank you.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Kathy Harard.
I, Brandon Gillie.
Do swear.
Do swear.
That I will faithfully discharge.
That I will faithfully discharge.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
The two duties incumbent upon me.
The duties incumbent upon me.
As a duly elected member.
As a duly elected member.
Of the Waterville City Council.
Of the Waterville City Council.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next, disclosure of conflict of interest. Any councillors have any conflicts of interest on any of the votes that they will take tonight? Seeing none, we will move right into the election of the council chair. Okay, so what we will do is we will open this up to nominations. These nominations do not need to be seconded, so I will open the floor to the council for nominations. Counselor Kleebak, sorry.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Green.
All right, Counselor Green, thank you.
I'd like to nominate Counselor Finch.
Counselor Finch, thank you. Any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, I will close nominations. What I will do now at this point is give each of them an opportunity to speak. Counselor Green, sitting chair, I will allow you to speak. Go first, so.
Okay, thank you.
Please. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. So it's been my privilege to serve as council chair for the past three years, and I believe that I've helped set a very, a tone of civility and stability on the council. It's been a time of considerable transition with two mayors and three city managers over that time, and I don't have my notes with me, but let me just say that I believe that this is not the only position of leadership on the council. I think that everyone on this council can be a leader and is showing leadership. I do think that I have the disposition, the experience, and the open-mindedness or the fairness to do this job for another year, and I would like to be replaced a year from now. So I'm asking for your support in the light of my record and my, again, my relationship building. I've worked with all councillors to make sure that their voices were heard, that they had the support they need, and I believe that that is one of the most important jobs of this role, is to speak for the council as a body and to do what's, you know, to, yeah, to lead in that way and act in the best interests of the city. And so, thank you for the opportunity, and regardless of the outcome, I look forward to working with all of you in the next year.
Counselor Finch.
Yeah, before I speak, I've just got a notice from a member of the community that no sound is coming through from the council meeting. You are muted. They are uncertain if that is because you are muted.
Where?
Oh, I don't know. All it says is Patty is muted, and I don't know if that is the reason there's no sound coming through.
It's not my knowledge.
Yeah.
Does it sound to anybody? This is going on four hundred and spots.
Well, I also got the same, well, a message as well. People online can't hear anything.
Okay. I gotta go here.
I also got the same, well, a message as well.
So, that's why I asked, what specifically are they asking about? Is that unmuted on there, Patty? There we go. My idea.
Okay.
All right, well, we'll see. We'll see if that works.
Confirm, yeah.
Problem solved, Patty.
Well, thank you for letting us know.
Yeah. Well, you know, thank you, Rebecca. You know, I will say I wasn't certain I was going to do this. I ultimately wound up deciding to run for chair for a couple of reasons, but the most prevalent one is, you know, the mayor asked me to serve on the youth council, and we went through and we did applications for the council. We have representative from the youth council who will be introducing himself later, but a lot of these youth said that they wanted to see representation of themselves in government and that representation being LGBTQ representation. And I just firmly believe representation matters, you know, and it's not lost on me that I am one of the only openly trans political leaders, not just in Maine but across the country. You know, and this is a largely symbolic position. There is one duty assigned to it in the city charter, and so in terms of, you know, I believe everyone deserves a seat at the table, and I think this is one of those opportunities that we as a council have to elevate minority voices. You know, Waterville did just, you know, through Counselor Green, have the first woman chair on the city council, and this would be another first, not just for Waterville but for Maine. And I just think it's an excellent opportunity to show, not just the youth but just the greater community that representation matters, and, you know, like I said, I believe that representation Next year I would be looking towards the council to see who else we could uplift in terms of representation. But, you know, to get to the second part of kind of the qualifications or the qualities that I possess, you know, in my time on the council, I have reached out to councillors, you know, especially in votes that are important to me. I've also treated them like adults, let them run the conversation. If they don't want to engage, I, you know, I'm not really going to push it. We are all seven individual councillors. We do come together as one body, and I do differ with Counselor Green in that I don't think that the council chair speaks for the body. They are just one voice of the body. You know, and I know that while on this council we have a lot of opposing views, you know, and even in the general public, I've just worked really hard to try to bring consensus, tried to make sure that even if I come with an idea that I'm willing to listen and try to find compromise or try to make sure that other people's voices, you know, are heard and ultimately what we present to the city. And then finally, you know, I do want to say that, okay, maybe it is a little bit more than representation, because sometimes the tone of kind of where the council is going and what we're doing is set with, at least, who the city chair is. And, you know, I really want to actually take the opportunity to commend Counselor Green because for the past three years that she has been chair, we have focused on housing. And, you know, housing is not my passion, you know, let's talk zoning reform, but I do think it's an opportunity for us to look towards, now that the Housing Committee has kind of finished up their work, it's a time for us to look forward to what's next for the city. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, at this point I will open it up to any other councillor comments or discussion should they wish to partake. Any councillors? Counselor Gillie.
So, you know, just thinking aloud real quick, I've been on the council for, I don't know, two and a half years now because obviously the special election, but, you know, with Counselor Green, you know, I always look for someone who is, who can answer questions and kind of like, you know, because I'm, sometimes I know this is going to be, I'm kind of sometimes difficult to deal with. And Counselor Green, you know, the leadership and, you know, and the, you know, the decision-making is important, and Counselor Finch is the same way. I think that, you know, Counselor Finch deserves an opportunity, but, you know, and I agree with you in regards to the fact that I think that, you know, while the council chair is, you know, you know, essentially takes, you know, the mayor's role if the mayor is not here, but I do find, and I feel as though the council chair is a position of influence and leadership, and I find both, those qualities in both of you. I absolutely do, and I appreciate all the, you know, the help that you've provided, and, you know, I just think that Counselor Finch, I think that, you know, he deserves this opportunity, and that's why I nominated him.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Counselor Kleebak?
Well, since I nominated Counselor Green, I think it would be my honor to speak on her behalf. I don't disagree with anything you said. I appreciate Counselor Green's poise. I appreciate her diplomacy. I appreciate how she has personally helped me think through things, and I particularly appreciate, you know, she talked about her disposition. Her demeanor is something I particularly appreciate. I've known Counselor Green, I don't know, since I moved to Waterville, I've known her as a, as the person that was in charge of overseeing my very little children's education, and I loved the tone that she set in that context. Sometimes, yeah, that environment ran more smoothly than it even runs here at city council. Yeah, her ability to keep a collegial, a collegial, smooth-running diplomatic and, yeah, and productive tone across issues that sometimes involve differing, really sharply differing opinions, that's something that I truly appreciate. I do not disagree that representation matters. I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I'm very proud to serve on a council with Counselor Finch. And my support for Counselor Green is not intended in any way to not show support for the role that you play on this council, I have to say, as a first year on the council, you have done a tremendous amount, and I'm very grateful to have someone on the council like you who, beyond representation, actually is bringing substance to your place on the council. I mean, representation is important, but it is, the council can't run on representation alone. It needs real work being done, and you do real work, and so for that, I'm very thankful. And so, yeah, I don't know, councillor, I think the challenges that are in front of us do demand some stability and continuity, in particular Counselor Green's eager to do it for another year, and so I would be very happy to support Counselor Finch next year, but, yeah, for this year, I personally, and whatever happens, whatever the rest of us decide, I don't think it's actually gonna, the outcome for us is not going to be dramatically different. I think both of you would do a fine job, so, yeah, that's where I stand.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, anyone else?
I guess I'll comment on. For me, this is hard. I've been on the council with Rebecca and for, I mean, since she first started on the council, and I really respect and appreciate, like, all her help. I mean, I ask a lot of questions, and she was always there to help me and always there to guide me through the process. To the point of Counselor Finch with representation, I think for me, that's why I'm on this council, and that's why I keep running, so to me, that is important. So, I am really torn, but regardless, I think either one of you guys will do what they great, yeah.
All right. Anyone else? We're good? Okay. Lucian.
As a member of the youth council, I just want to point out that Counselor Finch has done a fantastic job in getting the council up and running and guiding us through the machinations of city politics and growing our interests and organizing opportunities. At the same time, it's Congressman, not Congressman, Counselor Green who first introduced me to a lot of opportunities within city politics and to the current mayor, so I think that, just speaking from my personal experience, I would not be currently sitting in this chair at this meeting if it were not for either councillor, and I believe both have tremendous potential for this role, as my two cents.
Thank you. Okay. All right, so since we have two candidates, this will be a roll call vote. Is that correct, Patty?
What's that?
Two nominees?
We could do a show of hands for the first nomination, Counselor Green, and then move to a show of hands for Counselor Finch afterwards, if necessary.
Okay, that's fine. Yeah, that's.
Or we could go one by one and ask which councillor they would wish to support.
Listen, show world, Patty, I'm just living in it. I just want to make sure we do it right. I just want to make sure we don't miss anybody. So we'll go with option one.
Okay, so a show of hands for Counselor Green.
Correct.
All those in favor of Counselor Green. Cleebak and Harard. Okay, so that's three, so all those in favor of Counselor, that was four. So Counselor Green, I'm sorry, Counselor Green, so that's four in favor, right?
Yeah.
So that would mean that there would be two in favor of Counselor Finch, is that correct? Thank you.
All right. Excellent.
Okay.
All right, moving on to city manager report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Starting off, our comprehensive plan process, as you know, has been a long time running. The committee is meeting again on January 9th, 5:00 PM right here in this room, if you're interested, and the goal is to report out the current draft plan to the council for approval. So we're very hopeful that this plan is going to be reported out and moving on its way here, but we shall see. So that's this week on the 9th, 5:00 PM right here in this room. You may have noticed around the city, we have updated some of our wayfinding and directory signs with some sort of more relevant and visited locations around the community. They look pretty good. It's also in keeping with our brand style guide, the Waterville Blue, so those look very good. Thank you to Public Works for getting those out. Just an update, as you know, we have three collective bargaining agreements that we're going to be negotiating this spring. We've had our first internal meeting on the fire contract, and we're going to be meeting with IAFF tomorrow, actually, to kick off those negotiations first, and then we also have two more coming up through the spring. So we'll keep you updated, obviously, on that process and where things are moving with that. Additionally, the fiscal year '26 budget planning process is underway. The department heads are currently working on their budget requests, and we plan to sit down and meet with them last week of January, first week of February, and as you know, per the city charter, I'm to submit the budget to you, mayor and council, by a date in late March, so we are on track there. My next city manager's open office hours will be January 13th, 3:00 to 5:00 PM right here on the city hall annex. Of course, all Waterville residents, local business owners are welcome and encouraged to attend to share their thoughts, views, concerns, complaints, or anything else you'd like to tell me. A reminder, our new city hall hours are now in effect, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM, closed on Fridays. I will just add, we're off to a very smooth start, I think, staff and public-wise, no negative comments, staff seems to be doing well, long days, but seems to be off to a good start, but as you know, this is an eight-month pilot project, and we will see how it goes and reassess in eight months. Most of you probably know, but it's a reminder that the Teconic Bridge is fully closed until June 20th of this year, so please go around. We are, again, putting out a call for volunteers to assist in staffing a city warming shelter this winter. If you are interested in helping us staff the shelter, please, you can reach out to city administration or Teresa Crawford in the fire department is the best contact there. And lastly, I'm just going to turn over to Joe for a few minutes. He has a couple of quick updates on housing and I think also maybe some media strategy, but primarily housing. No slideshow tonight, I think.
The Grock Ball Report.
All right, there we are. So good evening, everyone, and I'd like to begin by echoing the
So good evening, everyone, and I'd like to begin by echoing the mayor's sentiment, wishing everyone a very Happy New Year. It's going to shape up to be an exciting 2025, I'm sure. I'd also like to extend a very warm welcome to our newest Counselor, Harard, as well. Welcome aboard. Look forward to working with you. So again, I'm afraid, again, as was spoiled already, that neither Glutamate nor Wordsworth is in the works this evening. However, I do have an exciting update about a project that I've been working on that focuses on developing an implementation strategy for the findings of the Waterville Housing Committee. So for those of you who are unaware, at its meeting on November 6th, the City Council unanimously adopted the final report of the Waterville Housing Committee. This committee was founded, excuse me, formed in July 2021 and was tasked with reviewing the city's existing housing policies and guidelines and examining key documents and procedures. Through its review, the committee aimed to identify critical issues affecting housing availability and affordability in the city. The committee put out a final report, which, again, was adopted on November 6th. For those of you who haven't had a chance to check it out yet, I encourage you to do so. It's available on the city's website under the Government tab, then just select Housing Committee under the Boards and Committees header. You'll find it right there on your left in the sidebar. So a lot of great work went into this final report, and we're eager to advance this. Again, we don't want just a report that's going to gather dust on a shelf. And so in early December, Brian, Michael Hall, and I met with Counselor Green to discuss ways through which we could advance these efforts. To this end, we discussed several ideas, including the prospect of establishing an annual statewide housing summit here in Waterville, identifying vacant properties and potential development opportunities around the city. And then what I'm going to be focusing on for a brief period here, coming up with ways to then present information regarding developments and advancements of this report over time, so the public can engage with it, understand what's happening, and really hold everyone to account. So in late December, I shared a plan with, with Counselor Green, Michael and Brian as well, that outlined a strategy for how we might begin this process. First and foremost, we were thinking about having, developing a new webpage, something that's readily accessible to people, something that we could have either on the city's site or directly linked to it in a manner that affords us the creativity and aesthetic that we need to really bring, bring the points home. In terms of messaging, again, it's easy when, you know, someone's talking about bringing out a policy initiative, to use jargon, to use language that people don't understand. We want to make sure that everyone's able to understand and engage with this. And so on the back end, I've been working on putting together language for this page in a, in a manner that explains potentially more complex topics, really boils it down for people. You shouldn't have to, have to do like, you know, successive web searches to figure out what something means. We're, we're trying to implement that on the spot. Another element that I'm really excited about, as well as the idea of asset mapping, all too often when we're thinking about housing projects, or just in general, any project, right, that local government's working with, you know, we hear about key players. But one of the things that I'm trying to do with this is to come up with a way for us to then visualize how those key players interact with each other. And to that end, I've identified some tools for free that we might be able to use to map out existing housing resources, how they interact with each other, and then to go about identifying areas where, again, additional progress may be needed or where other partners can expand into that space and really bring home the solutions that we're looking for. You know me, in terms of design, I'm looking for something that's pretty straight to the point, modern, just a basic aesthetic, not overly fancy. I'd like to thank Counselor Green for reining me in at points as I started to develop this and coming up with something, you know, that it isn't going to be sort of too complicated right off the bat, but easing our way into it, and for that, I'm very grateful. Another element that we're interested in, as well, is the idea of an interactive project tracker. So something where, over time, as we adopt new initiatives, we want the public to be able to come in, check out the site, and see exactly where we are in terms of advancing these. We don't want projects basically to be announced or have me come up and do a flashy presentation, and then into a black hole it goes until it's raised months later. And so right now, we're working on sort of the appropriate tool or the appropriate medium through which we can present that to people and ultimately open up to, to all of you. Finally, on this, we also have the idea of education and using social media as a tool to, again, introduce certain housing concepts or to provide sort of more coverage in terms of what we're doing and what we're trying to do. So to that end, I've been building out posts, thinking about different sort of alternative strategies that we could explore to really bring home and sort of share the, sort of the excitement around housing policy and the excitement around development. One thing that I've been experimenting with is 30- to 60-second YouTube shorts, something that quickly can, you know, deliver a concept in an engaging way. It's also something that I have some past experience with from my previous job, so I'm excited to continue my filmmaking career, and hopefully the reception will be positive in that regard. So in closing, I'd like to thank Counselor Green, Michael and Brian for their support and feedback that's allowed us to strengthen this approach. Of course, this discussion is not exclusively confined to the four of us. So to that end, you know, I'd be interested in any additional feedback, thoughts, any members of, of council have, any members of the public have as well, so we can really make this a tool that, you know, that looks good, that is good, and delivers the results that we're looking for. So thank you, and I'm more than happy to address any questions or comments you may have at this time.
Counselor Green?
Well, I just have to jump in and thank you very much, Joe, for, for taking the next step on this. I'm, as you know, very excited to, to see this. Recommendations be represented and shared. And so, yeah, thank you, and I'm, I'm very excited to see what you come up with, and, and I hope people will, will use this because, yeah, a, a lot of people have questions about housing, and so this will answer a lot of them and keep us excited about the momentum. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Joe.
Excellent, thank you.
I appreciate it. All set? All right, thank you, Brian. All right, moving on to council comments and committee reports. Any counselors have any comments or committee reports this evening? Counselor Finch?
I just want to comment that the Kushna Cantina is open as of yesterday, right here downtown, right on Main Street. I've already been twice. The tacos are delicious. The bon me, I would eat 100 of them. What are you doing after the meeting? Let's go get more tacos. No, but in all seriousness, I am just incredibly pleased that, that they've opened, that they had a successful first launch, and that this just contributes to the economic development of our downtown and just continues us towards a thriving downtown, and also tacos.
Excellent. Counselor Kleepack?
I also only have a comment. It's just, I wanted to draw attention to the Waterville Relay Race that happened out at Quarry Road this weekend. Previously, had, it had been scheduled to happen at Sugarloaf. It was Nordic ski race, but Sugarloaf didn't have the snow that we were able to boast of here in Waterville due to the diligent effort of volunteers and city employees to make sure that they've been making snow at this truly unique asset that we have in Waterville. So that was an unexpected 300 high school students that were here for that, and all of their families. That's, that's pretty remarkable. In that race, the newly incorporated Waterville High School team participated and had a, out of those 300 students, had Owen Beal Tate, I believe, was, took fourth, took fourth for the boys, and Andrea Gunter, I, I taught her how to ski when she was waist-high, took third overall. So that was very exciting for the Waterville team. That's very exciting, and, and we hope that that team continues to grow. It's, you know, a new thing that, that Waterville, that the high school team has. The Junior High also, about 100 kids were able to race there this weekend, and likewise had a bunch of really excellent skiers at the, at the very top of, of all those race rankings. So having a place like Quarry Road that has snow, when so many of these other places in the state don't have snow, right, early in the season, has really taken the youth here in Waterville and given them a remarkable opportunity. Lastly, I'll just close by saying, I was out there at Quarry Road this afternoon volunteering with the Silver Group, the, the little, little kids, I do it every year, and just seeing the amazing community that's out there, you know, all the fundraising efforts that have helped to low, you know, lower the barrier to access for that kind of activity for, for people. It's, it's exciting. It's remarkable, it's a remarkable little part of our community that's very vibrant right now. And if you haven't been to Quarry Road to take advantage of it, there are three ski free days throughout the winter. You can get access to all the gear you need. There'll be free lessons. You can enjoy the, the park, even if Nordic skiing is not your thing. There's snow shoeing, there's snow biking, there's all kinds of great activities that you can do in this beautiful facility, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Any committee updates? Huh? Or comments?
So I'm, I'm just going to put out a call for volunteers. KV Cap is looking for a tax assistant or anybody to kind of help with taxes. So if anybody's interested, just give KV Cap a call. Thank you.
Excellent. Lucian?
Yeah, so I'm a representative from the Waterville Youth Council, which is sort of a collection of teenagers from the city who worked on public service and discussing local issues, and we're putting together a sort of joint jobs fair and public service fair, and we're hoping to have various, both employers and groups that involve volunteer work that can allow high schoolers the chance to get engaged with these issues, and we're making some pretty good progress in helping that get along.
Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to public comments. Let's see, I got this list here. First up this evening, Elizabeth Leonard.
Hello?
Good evening.
Is this on? I have a question, and then I have a statement. And my question, I'm Elizabeth Leonard, Ward 4. My question to the council and to the city manager also, I guess, is, I'm wondering if there's anything in the works on the part of the city to honor Martin Luther King Day on January 20th? If there is, it would be great to publicize that widely and let people know. It's obviously a very important holiday and should be more than just a day of rest, in my opinion. It should be a day when we do something to honor this great man who reminded us of so many important things, including that injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. So that, that's my question. You don't have to answer it now. Still another council meeting before it comes. I don't think so. No, no. Nothing. And I have seen nothing also from, nothing from the city.
There's no council meeting before the, our next council meeting is the day after. It's the 21st.
Oh, yeah. So, okay, so there's nothing in the works for Martin Luther King Day?
To my knowledge, I don't, I can't.
And I don't know if anybody knows about.
Has historically done anything?
Oh, sometimes. I, I have done things in the city on Martin Luther King Day myself, and Colby has, but I don't see much going on up there either.
Okay. All right.
That's unfortunate, and I will ponder ways that I can honor him myself and let people know about it.
I, I think the rotary, oh, sorry, yeah.
Sorry, yeah.
Okay.
Right.
This is public comment, not public discussion?
It was a question, and I took the bait.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, you're fine. You're fine. Please continue.
Please let me know if you come up with things. And my, my statement is something that actually I sent as a public comment, but I, public comments that I send to the city council and, and the mayor sometimes seem to just vanish. I don't know where they go, as, they're not really public comments if you just send them online. So I wanted to make this as a public statement. As many of you know, I'm a longtime resident of Waterville, and I am sure that many of you will not be surprised to know that I am horrified by the plans and policies that the president-elect intends to implement as soon as he is inaugurated on Martin Luther King Day. And I'm sure that many of you share my concerns. Around the country, as I'm sure some of you know, elected leaders are already making their opposition to these policies, the most horrible of them, at least, their opposition known. These policies will hurt the poor in our communities, including with further tax cuts, and of course, I'm deeply concerned about the poor in our community. But some of the most cruel policies that he has already articulated include threatened mass rounding up of, and internment and deportation of immigrants using the United States military and perhaps even local police forces to accomplish what he himself has declared will be, and this is a quote from him, "a bloody story." The individual who has been tapped to be the border czar for this incoming president, Tom Homan, was an ardent supporter, as I'm sure you know, of the president-elect's previous family separation policy, and he has warned that he will deploy shock and awe tactics going forward. Even immigrants who have DACA protections, Deferred Action for Childhood Arrival protections, even individuals who have birthright citizenship but whose parents may be undocumented, will not be safe, and we can be sure that we have immigrants of this nature in our community. It is no secret that the president-elect plans to target blue states and communities first and foremost with his inhumane and destructive plans. I would just like to say that I hope that the city of Waterville will be brave when these violent mass deportation schemes reach our community. And I would love to see the city draw a line in the sand now, as leaders in other communities around the country have already done, and say they, that we will not tolerate or cooperate with this kind of cruelty and will act vigorously to protect all of our residents, regardless of their immigration status or that of their parents and their family members. Thank you.
Thank you. Patty, anyone online?
No.
Okay. Next, I have Bill, Bill O'Wright's. Huh? Yeah, yes, sir.
I stand before you today as a concerned citizen outraged by the unconstitutional actions of the Waterville Police Department and the broader, broader patterns of abuse we are witnessing in law enforcement across Maine and beyond. These actions are not just violation of individuals' rights, they are attacks on the foundational principles of our nation, principles enshined by the Constitution to protect us from government outreach. While engaged in First Amendment protected activity, I was approached by officers from the Waterville Police Department. They demanded my identification under the threat of arrest on public property. This was a blatant violation of my Fourth Amendment rights, which protects against unreasonable searches and seizures. I was not breaking the law, nor was there any reasonable articulable suspicion to justify the demand. This is a clear example of the police exceeding their authority to intimidate and suppress lawful expression. These acts are unconstitutional. The founding fathers warned us of these tyrannical overreach, which is why they established the First and Fourth Amendments as safeguards against such abuses. Those sworn to uphold the law become the very perpetrators of these violations. It is our duty as citizens to speak out. Unfortunately, Waterville is not an isolated case. Across Maine, law enforcement agencies have faced allegations of misconduct, abuse of power, and even vigorous crimes. The Bedford Police Department scandal where officers were sexually assaulting minors, accused of sexually assaulting minors, serves as a chilling reminder of what happens when accountability is absent. Victims in communities have been left to suffer while those responsible evade justice. These, these incidents reflect a broader systematic problem with law enforcement. Officers entrusted with enforcing the law too often act as though they are above it. They intimidate citizens, they abuse their power, and in some cases, protect predators from their own ranks. To the Waterville Police Department and any other agency engaging in unconstitutional behavior, hear this, we, the people, will not be silenced. We will not tolerate violations of our rights. We demand justice.
Thank you very much. Patty, anyone online now? Very good. Anyone else for public comment that didn't have the opportunity to sign in? All right, seeing none. Let's move to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much. Now, can I entertain a motion to read by title only?
Motion to read by title only.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Wonderful. All right, moving right along to new business, Resolution 2025.
Override of the mayor's veto.
Move to adopt.
All right, well, I will kick this one off. I am not going to kick it off with any fanfare or a big speech. I spoke to each of you prior to doing it and submitted a bunch of stuff. I spoke to each of you prior to doing it and submitted a bunch of stuff for Amy to write a brilliantly written article with the thought process. So I will now open it up to you to discuss and decide what you'd like to do. So, take it away. Who would like to kick us off? Councillor Finch?
So, you know, again, Mr. Mayor, because you and I have talked, the way that I see this is we voted unanimously on the 17th to approve it. It did not contain everything that I wanted in it. I still voted for it. I still think it's good for the city. It's, again, not meant to be a solution. It's a good tool in our toolbox. It differs from the existing committee in that the existing committee is operational and population management, and this focuses on long-term constructive action we can take as a city. And I would say to, you know, the business community that removing certain prioritizations out of that memo does not mean that you are excluded from the committee, committee, task force. There's still room at the table for you, and I would argue there's essential room at the table for the business community. You know, what we passed on the 17th does allow the business community to come with their concerns. It also just directs them where to start for the first six months with those three memo items. But ultimately, we agreed as a council that this was the best thing for, you know, we agreed that a task force was good for the city. We unanimously passed it, and we should unanimously override this veto. Thanks.
Councillor Gilli?
I, you know, I kind of, I kind of agree with Councillor Finch. I think that it's important that we're able to, you know, you know, as previously mentioned, was unanimously voted upon. And obviously, there's an opportunity for everyone to be at the table through the application process. And I think that it provides us an opportunity here in the city council for us, because we're going into a budget season. We're going into a budget season that's going to be, we're going to have to make some tough decisions. We're going to have to really get to work on trying to alleviate some of these, you know, some of these financial burdens of the citizens of Waterville. And, you know, with our city manager, who has so graciously been appointed to the task force, will ensure, will ensure that, you know, that that work is being done, and those who are most in need are, you know, you know, we're trying to, again, it's not a solution, it's a tool. It's something that we can, you know, try and mitigate some, you know, some issues that we're experiencing. But, but again, we're going into a tough budget season, and we need to, and we need to, we need to get to work on that. So I'm cool with overriding it.
Thank you.
I will also speak on the overriding. I think, I mean, I wasn't here for the last meeting, but I did go, I had the opportunity to go over and listen to the last city council meeting. And I feel like, for me, just because it's just the beginning, and I know we can always go back six months from now and really take a look at it and add anything, if we want to add anything in, that I do stand with the overriding as well. I do believe that it was passed unanimously last time, and that's the way I'm going for it again this time.
Councillor Green?
I basically, you know, I feel that this, we passed this unanimously. It was a compromise. It's not perfect. We could go back to the drawing board and come up with something new, but I think we need to move on and do the work, and the work is happening. It's happening in conversations in the existing task force, and it's happening spontaneously. I think we need to focus on the collaborative elements of this, of bringing people together to find solutions to the things that we can solve in our city and to make the most of the wonderful resources we do have. And, you know, my point from the beginning was, let's focus on what is going well and build on that. I think we do have, we do have a task force existing now that's been meeting. It's not the same composition as the one outlined in the resolution, but I think that they should be, I hope that they will be synced somehow so that we aren't asking people to do double duty, especially our staff and the social service providers who are working so hard. I mean, it's great to have more people at the table, for sure, but, but let's be efficient about it. I like the idea of taking this next six months and then having a report back and saying, how are we doing? What, you know, what do we need to do now? And just one final point I want to make is, I don't understand this idea of the business community. This came from them initially. There is representation specifically for business owners in the community on the, on the task force. And I don't think there's such a thing as a monolithic perspective either. So I also feel that we should override the mayor's veto and move on with trying to bring everyone to the table so that we can have some, start doing the work and getting some, making progress on what we can.
All right. Thank you.
Well, there's been a lot of talk about efficiency, and I like the notion of efficiency. It has felt, at times, not in the instance that you're referring to here, Councillor Green, but it has at times felt euphemistic to me. I, I am very mindful of being efficient with the time of the people, the limited human resource that we have to dedicate to this kind of a thing, right? So, you know, of course, the newly constituted committee would have, you know, essentially a replicate of what is on this operational committee, right? So we're sort of like doubling the time commitment that, that those people have and then, and then drawing, you know, city resources, human resources into that. I have wondered throughout all of this if not, is it not possible that perhaps this, the existing task force could not be remade? So to retain its operational capacity and, and then also add a sort of visioning, planning component to it? Would that not be the most efficient use of, of our human resources? From that perspective, it's actually, I mean, I think, which, either way, we're going to, we're going to find something that works here, but it's my initial inclination to actually sustain the veto and, and look at the assets that we have now and how to improve the structure that we actually have without necessarily creating, reinventing the wheel. The thing about all of this that is glaringly obvious to me is, it's a matter of how we are communicating about the issue of homelessness. Homelessness is, we, as has been noted many times, it is an issue that is national, it is statewide, and it is regional. It's not just Waterville. It is affecting every community in America right now. The causes of that are numerous and deeply rooted. Everything from some of the, the most obscene income inequality that the planet Earth has ever seen to the scourge of fentanyl and other drugs that have been running rampant across this country, et cetera, et cetera. There are a number of other causes. And truthfully, Waterville is doing really well. Waterville is a leader in the state of Maine on trying to address homelessness. We have a problem in Waterville, for sure. There are, there are people that have needs, deep needs, that they do not have the capacity to meet themselves. And it is the onus upon any community to care for its community members that are falling apart. That is the foundation of civil society. That is the, like, the care of the people in your community. Waterville is doing a great job. There is more work to be done. And I think that it's easy to forget the successes we have made in this community by solely focusing on what more is yet to be done. Yes, let's, let's, let's work. But I do not think that Waterville is somehow, is derelict. I think, I think we're trying in the city of Waterville. We have structures. We have structures that are working. We have, by all accounts, the nicest low-barrier, low-barrier shelter in the state of the three. That's something to be proud of, that, so the people that live there can live there with, with real dignity. We have tried, we have taken many actions since I've been on this council to try to meet the crises as they arise throughout the winter. We've worked with ARPA funds, and any time we, we have had resources at our disposal, we've tried, we've tried to use them. So I think these successes are something we can build on and we need to build on. You know, as far as what should happen here, I mean, procedurally, I, you know, again, it's a matter of communication, right? Like, it's a complex issue. It's a very complex issue. It's hard for people who aren't thinking about it all the time to fully understand what's going on. I was, I was opposed to the notion of a veto because I thought that it complicated the communication to the public, you know, Amy's article notwithstanding. Yeah, because it, to a person who's not following the intricacies of the logic behind that unprecedented use, in my opinion, unprecedented use of the veto, it would seem to say that what we achieved last time was somehow not good. And that's not necessarily the case. That's not the case, right? So, yeah, I would have liked to have seen, I would have liked to have seen us build on, on that if there was something that we need, that needed to be added to that. I don't really know. And there has been talk to, and I know I'm going long in the tooth here, but I'm going to circle back to the notion of efficiency, because this is the last point I want to make. You know, the, the debate last time, if you look back at it and you follow the debate that we had, a lot of it revolved around item two on the list that we had, the infamous item two, which was something that supposedly members of the business community called for, which was asking for increased efficiency in the expenditure of city resources. And that sounds at first blanch, at first blush, to be, you know, something laudable, right? Let's be more efficient with city resources. And as Councillor Gilli points out, we're heading into budget season. That's something to be mindful of. However, it's important that this notion of efficiency, I'm not exactly sure what that means. I'm not exactly sure what that means, because it does feel euphemistic to me. Is efficiency, talking about the efficiency of use of government expenditure, does, does that mean that we should suspend our capacity to be flexible and meet needs, emergent needs as they arise? Because the, in reality, factually, the best way to save the city money is to spend on getting people in homes and getting them stable and secure, whatever way we can do that. Because that's how we save money on the first responder side. Like, all of these other sort of emergent, emergency half-measures that we use to get people through the cold months of the winter. You know, you save the city money if you can spend money to get people stable, right? And I worry that there's this notion that as we, as we, you know, offer more services for the unhoused, that that, somehow our community becomes a magnet and draws more people into the community. That is not borne out, and I admit that, I've said this before in these council meetings, I admit that I questioned that myself. But I've looked at the data. That is not what the data suggests, right? Eighty-five percent of the people who avail themselves of homeless services here in Waterville have a connection to Waterville, right? Seventy percent of the unhoused nationally are experiencing that in the county of their birth, right? So limiting, limiting the amount of homeless services is not going to limit the number of homeless people in your community. It's going to be the opposite. Like, I truly want, I truly want people to be living stable lives, housed. I do not want business owners to have to be concerned about needles or illegal activity in front of their businesses. I believe, I believe, the best way to get to that point is to be able to provide opportunities for stable, successful lives. That's, that's what I want. And so I'm wary, and I didn't know how to craft a bullet point two. I didn't know how to craft a bullet point two that was going to be serving these two, what in my mind seemed like diametrically opposed, you know, pressures. It was impossible. It was impossible, and, you know. So I think that if, I already said that was my, my inclination was to sustain the veto and just improve what we already have. But if it is the will of the council, if everybody else wants to override the veto and run with what we have, I think we should. I personally do not think that it's, you're going to be able to Frankenstein some kind of efficiency language that's going to be, that's going to be functional in, onto that right now. Because I'm very leery of that. So that's my, that's my thinking.
Great. Thank you. Councillor Gilli?
I just have a quick question. In regards to saying improve what we have now, though, don't you think, because, you know, that's what I was going back and forth with in regards to like, either sustain or obviously, you know, override the veto, is, you know, if we sustain it, I mean, is it just business as usual or, you know? But how do we approve upon that, though, in regards? Wouldn't approving upon that be the creation of this task force that would, that would essentially, you know, kind of streamline our way to? Again, it's not this, this is a problem I don't believe is going to be solved, unfortunately. However, having said that, I think that, again, a task force would, would help. And as Councillor Finch said, it is a tool for the city to use in order to mitigate this, this issue that, that we have here.
I'll let somebody else speak if they have some thoughts.
Just to review the three items that are the tasks at hand of what we did pass. The first one being mitigate barriers and risks to accessing and supplying transitional housing. So this would work on a risk-share model, encouraging public-private partnerships to encourage more transitional housing. Number four would be promote constructive community behavior, campaigns that promote community solidarity, enhance access to social resources, and foster a constructive and supportive environment. And number five, foster community partnerships and civic engagement. So strong partnerships with NGOs, religious institutions, businesses, and schools. Encourage community-driven collaboration. Encourage community-driven collaborations. I think that's a great place to start at number five, honestly, and work backwards. And I think that we're never going to come up with something ideal until we let this group go for it. But I do think, what I would like to see is some sort of, I don't want to create another silo, as it were. So I am interested in ways that we could take the existing task force and build on it with these other elements. So I'm just wondering, I believe Katie might be online. I'm wondering, I'd like to hear from her, yes, there she is, as to what would be helpful from her point of view as someone who is on the front lines of managing, you know, day-to-day operations, as well as thinking about strategic, long-term initiatives.
All right. Well, we'll get to members of the public once we, anybody else from the council wish to speak before we turn it over to Counsel Finch?
I'd just also like to echo that, you know, I would like to hear from Dr. White, and also that both, you know, you, Counsel Green, you had spoken that, you know, the business community isn't a monolith. And that is true, because I've had individual members who have businesses downtown who have reached out to me urging me to override the veto, along with various other community members. But to that aspect, they are not, they're not a monolith, and that they are very much needed and wanted at the table. And I appreciate that some of the businesses downtown do understand that, and that my comments were more directed at the people who do, the business owners or business leaders who feel slighted by leaving number two out, and that that does not leave them out of the conversation, and that they are still very much welcome and needed.
Thank you. Okay. Dr. White, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Councilors, it's a pleasure to be with you. I'm Katie Spencer-White, and I'm the CEO at Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter and Services. I want to thank everybody for the comments so far. You've had a lot of virtual high-fives from me this evening. To answer Counselor Green's specific question, what do we need on the front lines? Really, and I speak solely for Mid-Maine Homeless Shelter and Services, because I do believe our existing collaboration over the last little over a year has produced some really fantastic results for the city of Waterville. I think the next step is city-level leadership that is able to convene a variety of stakeholders so that we understand the needs and concerns of the commercial district and business owners across the city, of residential, community members, and others. In terms of addressing these issues, there's no substitute for having city leadership that can convene major stakeholders like our colleges, our healthcare providers, and others who are central to this. Because what we're doing right now, and I think the meeting that we had yesterday with the existing task force was really, I think, illustrative of kind of where we're at, and I don't want to, I'll characterize it as a plateau right now, because we're certainly addressing the on-the-ground needs as they exist, real-time data as of today. But some of the things we need to push through going forward to get Waterville to the next step is asking questions like, we've heard a lot about this 900 calls to homeless service providers like us and the Waterville Area Soup Kitchen. And when we disaggregate that data or just unpack it a little bit, what becomes clear is that there's really a handful, like two handfuls, of really frequent flyers, if you will, folks who are constantly butting up against the criminal justice system, engaging with law enforcement. And they're also crashing out of a lot of other systems, like the behavioral or healthcare systems. And so how do we bridge those divides? Because when we think about it, some of the folks who are causing some of the most significant problems, it's multiple system failure, and we need those stakeholders in the room to figure out how we work through those problems. And so I think leading with data and iterating this particular group, or the cities work in this area, to include some of these other system providers so that we understand who are the hardest folks to serve, but also, and I really appreciate Counselor Klepak and others who spoke to this, what's going right and what's going well. The vast majority of people who are unhoused are doing the work to get back into housing. They're not causing problems. They're trying really hard to reintegrate back into society.
Katie, I don't mean to interrupt, but 20 seconds, I apologize.
No, I'm done. And then really just work on how do we navigate these other systems so that we can really address those couple of handfuls of individuals who are the real pain points for a lot of folks in the community.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Any other members of the public wish to speak with regard to this item? Sir?
I actually...
I'm sorry. State your name, what ward you live in.
Travis Moulton. I live in Ward Five.
Thank you.
But I work at the Mobile Mart.
Okay.
On Pleasant Street. And I was listening to everything. We have the biggest problem with that, with the homeless and with people. We end up having Waterville PD at our store at least three to four times a day because they get out of hand, and we can't deal with them. It makes it harder for us. And our owners live in southern Maine, so they're not up here all the time. And of course, we're dealing with all kinds of theft, and we can't even begin to calculate how much goes in and out. So we'd like to see something with, for like businesses like ours. We don't have no protection in a roundabout way, because there's usually one clerk there. And they wait until that clerk is so busy that they can't keep track of them. So this plan, we need to include like businesses, like convenience stores like us, who are losing thousands of dollars out the door every day. I can't count how much I watched walk out the door, and I can't do nothing, because all I can do is say trespass them. And that's only good for a year. But that's not how I want to do things. We want to make it so that everybody can come and go. And then, of course, they come and stuff just disappears. And that's what I have on that.
Thank you very much. Anna?
Good evening. Anna Holdenar, Ward Seven. So I do a lot of homeless outreach. I work very closely with the homeless community, both at the soup kitchen. I'm part of the crew that feeds folks on Sundays. I have made personal connections with a lot of folks. And I'm not going to lie, I've kind of dropped off of these meetings lately, so I am still playing catch-up, but this is exactly one of the reasons why I started attending meetings. So with this task force, what I'm hearing is that you want to develop a task force, and these are the problems. You guys have already defined the problems. So usually what happens with a task force, especially when you're talking about, this is really a people problem. It's not just the homeless problem. This is a people problem, because some of the folks, they are homeless, yes. Some of the folks are also housed. Some of the folks are in between. So really, we have the people problem, and we have some folks who, you know, some of you are, you know, some of you I've seen down, you know, mingling with the community, whether it's at the soup kitchen or just kind of out and about. But you guys are folks who, you guys know what the problem is. So my question is, if you already know what the problem is, why hasn't it been solved? Because what I'm thinking, what I'm hearing, is that maybe those aren't totally the issues. So why not have, give that, you know, why not keep the veto and take a look at the language and let the task force be the ones to actually identify the issues? Let the task force to be, they are folks from service providers. They are people who have experienced homelessness or the risk of being homeless. I do actually agree that there should be a specific clause in there to make sure there is a minimum of three business folks, business owners, in on this task force, because, yes, the business community is very much impacted, and not just the ones over by the shelter or over by the soup kitchen, the ones downtown also. Because I know, I've been personally called about some issues with somebody, you know, one or two people downtown. So business people, business owners absolutely need to be represented, and as a minimum of three people, because that's the minimum for everyone else. Let the task force come up with their own, actually identify the problems. Because the problems, what we in this room may see as problems, as they start discussing with other business owners, with other people who have experienced homelessness or other service providers, you might be surprised that it's completely different. So that's just kind of my suggestion, as somebody who is heavily involved in the community. So, thanks.
Thank you very much. Nancy?
I'm Nancy Sanford, Ward One. And in my email to you all, I urged you to override the veto, and that's how I continue to feel. I think that the task force, I think that there are lots of good things happening in Waterville in regards to poor folks and folks that are homeless and unhoused. And I see this task force as a way to sort of get all those good efforts together and to build on what we've already accomplished. And so I urge you to override the veto.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Seeing none, let's show of hands. All those in favor?
Does this not need to be a roll call? Right? A veto, however, it needs to be a roll call, because it requires a two-thirds majority?
Sorry, my thing's not on. It requires a two-thirds majority, so I believe this requires a roll call.
Yes.
Fair enough. Counsel Gilly?
Yes.
Counsel DeBrito?
Yes.
Counsel Klepak?
So to be clear, a yes to override.
Yes.
Yeah, right. Yes.
Counsel Green?
Yes.
Counsel Finch?
Yes.
Counsel Harrod?
Yes.
Warden six in favor and zero opposed.
All right. Moving on to Resolution 212025.
Authorize the renewal of a special amusement permit to Elm City Nine LLC, doing business as the Lockwood Hotel.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. Moving on to Resolution 222025.
Authorize issuance of a second-hand license to Andwell Health Partners, doing business as Andwell Hospice Thrift Shop.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Anyone from Andwell here this evening? Hi, please. Would you like to come up and talk about what's going on?
Hi, my name is Jenny Cowie, and I live in Auburn, and I'm the retail operations manager for Andwell Hospice Thrift Stores.
Okay. What is it that they do? What are you doing?
We operate a thrift store, so we have two currently, one in Auburn, one in Augusta. And everything that we receive is donated, and the stores are run by volunteers. And our proceeds, the net proceeds, go to support hospice patients throughout our communities that either are underinsured or have no insurance.
Excellent. And, okay, this is 180 Main Street?
Yes.
Okay, fair enough. Awesome. Well, thank you very much. I appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Any discussion, any comments or questions? Seeing none. All those in favor? All right. Moving on to Resolution 232025.
Appoint citizens to various boards and committees.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay.
Wait, Mr. Mayor, before we bring everyone up here.
Yes.
I just recall from when I was applying, well, let me just say, is there, do we have a, in our policies, that a citizen may only serve on two committees? I seem to recall that policy had been in place at some point. I don't know if that is still in place. There's a member, a citizen, who is on here on three separate committees, so I just wanted to clarify that we're not appointing someone more than against our policies.
I believe that policy is still in place. I know that we have, based on people coming forward on committees, we have appointed people to more than two committees. I believe it's two.
Yeah, there are a couple of people who are on two. There's one person who is on three committees.
Right, yeah. And I think we have, in the past, bent those rules.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't a hard policy or something like that before we get up here and swear people in.
And some of those committees are very, are more inactive than others, so it's, in some cases, it's a paper appointment, if you will. We need people in those seats, even though the committees aren't necessarily very active. Okay. Thank you, Patty. Yes.
All right. Thank you, yeah. You know, listen, again, we had quite a few people express interest. A lot of folks wished to continue on some of these committees, which I think is great, but we had a lot of, some really good new faces as well. And, you know, we try to, Patty and I talk about, we try to fit people in where we can and get people involved. I think that's really important, you know, when you have residents that, you know, want to be involved, you know. And I know, like, you came as part of, you know, a planning board meeting, you know, to get your business up and running, and had such a great experience that you wanted to continue and do something else in the city, and I think that's fantastic. So things like that are great. So, yeah, we had a lot of great people. I met a lot of good, you know, new faces, which I think is fantastic, and certainly happy to have them, you know, serve on these boards and committees that we have. So, any councilor discussion, comments? All right. Seeing none. All those in favor?
And if I may?
You may.
I'll go to the podium, and I'll call folks up.
Yes.
And we can do an oath.
I think that is fantastic, Patty.
Once I get my act together here. So I will read the names of the appointed members, and if folks could come up in a semicircle kind of in front of me, and then we'll do an oath en masse. Oatmeal Emellow is appointed to the Board of Assessment Review. Kelly Adams. Board of Zoning Appeals is Joshua Ezra Haveland and Travis Moulton. The Ethics Committee is Zan Po Lu, Kim Lane, and Scott McAdoo. Did see Scott. Fair Hearing Authority is Paula Raymond, Anna Holdenar, and Aaron Hanlon. Kennebec Regional Development Authority is Michael Roy. Kennebec Sanitary Treatment District Trustees is Kevin Gorman and Scott McAdoo. And Scott McAdoo. Public Library Trustees, Daniel Bolia. Carrie Hall. And Catherine Smanick. Photo Registration Appeals Board, Kim Lane. Waterville Housing Authority Commission, Kevin Gorman. Kim Lane. And Christina Lynn Cody. And Waterville Sewage District Commission, Daniel Anderson. I could ask you all to please raise your right hands and repeat after me. I state your name. Do affirm that I will faithfully discharge, to the best of my abilities, the duties incumbent upon me, as a duly appointed member of the committee, to which I have been appointed. Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your willingness to serve on these various boards and committees. I think that's great. Okay. Moving on to Resolution 242025.
One moment, please.
One moment granted.
Appointment of city councilors to various committees.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. All right. So we have a few committees that require some membership for folks that are, have been on there for a while. So what, do we have, I don't know, do we have recommendations, or do we have? I know that you put out a thing, and you had some questions.
We have, and we have a couple of councilors who are interested in the Finance Committee position. So, and I don't know, I mean, I suppose we can use the same process we used for Council Chair?
Sure. Like, I mean, so, all right, so the first one up, I guess, is Finance Committee. So you said there were three, who wants to be?
Three people have expressed interest, so I think if, you know, if they are still interested, they can nominate themselves. No?
Well, I was interested at first, but I am definitely, I mean, if there's other people that want to step up, I got a lot of my play right now.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Flavia is not nominating herself.
Absolutely not.
So maybe the question is, are there any nominees?
Who wants to serve on this Finance Committee?
I mean, I'll, you know, I'll do whatever I can to help out, so I'll.
Just one. Anyone else?
I'm on the city manager's one, and I'm on the Commissions of Land Review. So I'm on a couple.
It would be a good committee, Kathy, for you to sit on. Again, as we enter the, again, we meet with the school and the city to talk about, you know, the budgets and issues and things that are going on, and what kind of crafts the budget that you will see. So it might be a good opportunity for you to see the process holistically, as it, before it comes to the council, so to speak. So.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. I just didn't want to, you know, I'm happy to fill in gaps, just like Brandon said, like, for, but I am interested in that one.
Well, I think we should just, I'm Russell, and let's see how this goes.
I mean, as I said, I mean, if Counsel Harrod wants, I mean, I just, I just wanted to help out, that's all.
That's what I love about you. All right. So you're okay? Fair enough. Okay. Next. Historic Preservation? That's a good one. It is kind of important. We should have some representation. Mr., I want to help out.
Yeah.
Those guys are watching. I'll get done.
And we have Kennebec Regional Development Authority. So this Waterville has two memberships plus an alternate, but not specifically, we don't need to specifically appoint a city councillor. Where do we sit with that one? Like, do you, should we have Joe do this?
Mike Roy is one.
Oh, is this the Mike Roy one?
Yes, Mike Roy is one.
Two members.
Yeah. Who's the other one? Do we, is that what we need?
I'm on there.
And Brian is on one.
Mm-hmm.
You could have one more councillor.
We have one more. Yeah, so it's Mike Roy, myself, and we could have one more.
Alternate, yep.
How often does this speed?
Certainly once, once a month in the evening.
If one of you two can't make it. How does that work?
No, well, that would be the alternate, so. I mean, Mike and I are at every meeting.
Right, but if one of you can't go, then the alternate has to go. Or neither of you can go.
In theory, I think that's how it's supposed to work, yes.
Neither of you can go. All right, well, I'll volunteer for that, because that doesn't seem like that.
Okay, fair enough. Great, we're cruising. And then we have K V Cog. And I believe you said you were interested in, was that something that you were?
I'm willing, yes. I'm also, if there's someone else who's interested, I'm, I'm.
Brandon, Mr. Help Out? No, I'm just kidding.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
So if no one else is interested, I'm willing to be on that one.
I nominate Counsel Green.
Two votes for Counsel Green. Sure, absolutely, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's important.
Yep.
So, can I just clarify that it's Counsel Harrod for the Finance Committee?
Correct.
Who was for Historic Preservation? Brandon?
Yeah.
And Kennebec Regional Development Authority was Counsel Klepak, and K V Cog is Counsel Green.
Correct.
Right.
Yep.
Look at us go.
Boom, solving problems. So since we didn't have names, we should move that as amended?
Yep.
I can't do that, you guys have to step up.
Second.
Thank you. All right. And all those in favor of the amendment? And then we'll move it as amended. Again, all those in favor?
Is there a motion to move it as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you.
All right.
And all those in favor? Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you very much. Okay. All right, moving on to Resolution 252025.
Approve $8,000 in funding from the Wealth Grant Fund for a weatherization project for application 2024-1, as submitted by KV cap.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay, so this is the first applicant, or the first for the Wealth Grant Fund that was approved earlier last year, later, earlier last, last year, I guess. So, great. This is fantastic. This is what it's intended for. Any councilors have any questions with regard to this particular request?
No, I'm just curious if someone from KV cap is here who wanted to talk about it, but otherwise.
We don't have someone from KV cap, but we do have our Community Development Specialist here who could speak to it more.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. Michael Hall, Community Development. So these applications, we have two. This is the first one that came over from KV cap. It was reviewed by myself, as well as Christina from Finance, and it met all income verification requirements, all location requirements, and basically all the requirements outlined in the Wealth Grant Fund. And we're really excited because it looks like the ball is rolling on this.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Any questions? Counsel Green.
So, just to clarify, these are two different households that have applied to KV cap for home repair? And KV cap is overseeing that work? And this is being funded by our ARPA funds?
Yep.
Yeah, okay. Awesome.
And they're both for weatherization projects?
Okay.
So insulation in the attics and second floors.
Excellent. Okay. All those in favor? Wonderful. Moving on to Resolution 262025.
Approve $10,000 in funding from the Wealth Grant Fund for a weatherization project for application 2024-2, as submitted by KV cap.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. Any questions with regard to this one? Michael was standing there, I think he would say ditto, but I think you're all set, so. Okay. All right, all those in favor? Thank you. All right, moving on, yes.
Could I just make one more comment here, just to plug this opportunity? Or maybe Michael could speak to it, but eligible organizations are nonprofits doing work on home, home repair or home development for low-income individuals, so. If you're listening out there, consider it, check into the wealth fund.
Excellent. Okay, moving on to Ordinance 272025.
amend the Administrative Ordinance, Section 5-2.4, deadline for submitting new matter.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Okay. And this is simply moving cloture for anything getting on to the city council agenda from 2:00 PM on the fifth day to the 12:00 noon on the sixth day preceding the regular council, regular meeting of the city council. So. Any questions or concerns with regard to this particular item?
Can you explain to the public the rationale behind this?
Well, typically, the agenda went out on Fridays, and we're not here on Fridays, we have to kind of move things up a day. So everything moves back, so now the agenda will go out on Thursdays. But in order for, to have everything prepared for this document, Sarah needs to have it by noon on Wednesday. So. You do a good job?
Very good.
No, not you, he's.
Excellent.
Yeah, thank you.
And everyone has an extra day to read their packets now before meetings.
All right. Any other questions or concerns? Counsel Green?
Just as I'm reading through this, it specifies that all business to be conducted at the next regular meeting shall be made available to each councillor between the hours of 12:00 noon and 4:00 PM. Yeah, on the Monday and Tuesday preceding the scheduled meeting.
We have not, obviously been following that for a long time. You get your packets earlier.
Which is fabulous, so just checking on that. I guess sometime we could update that, but good job.
I guess we could right now. How did you see an issue strike that out? We have not, we have not been using that schedule, I think, for a very long time.
Okay, so I'll, I'll move that we amend the, between the hours of 12:00 noon and 4:00 PM on the Monday and Tuesday to 12:00 noon and 4:00 PM on the?
Thursday.
Thursday. Right.
Okay, second.
Preceding the scheduled meeting.
I'll second that.
Yeah.
That is, may I speak to that for a moment? Brian's looking at me like, because I'm.
Just make sure it's not a fraud.
Right, right.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
I don't currently put the agenda together, it's done in the city manager's office. But I know it can be very difficult to pull all the pieces together. So I would be concerned that Thursday at noon, if there's, or between noon and four, if there are any issues that arise pulling pieces together, that it might, we might not meet that deadline. So just because things happen, I would be more comfortable with a Friday date. I realize that Monday and Tuesday doesn't really afford enough time if we were to meet that end time for the council to properly review the packet and make it available to the public. But I think Friday is more reasonable, and it's what we've been doing in practice. So I personally would feel more comfortable with that, but I'm happy to defer to the city manager's good judgment.
I mean, isn't it that City Hall is closed on Friday?
But if things happen, we would be there to get the agenda out.
There may still be an occasion where we're getting it out on Friday. So I would say if we're going to leave on Thursday, definitely change it to 5:30 PM, not 4:00 PM. If you're going to leave on Thursday, but I think Patty's suggestion is fine. Also, just in the event there are delays on one particular agenda Friday, you could say Friday closes business, say 4 o'clock on Friday.
Can I ask one question? What are the, what are the teeth on this? Like, what's, what's the point of that? I don't, I kind of feel like, why mess with it? I mean, the team here is going to do their best, you know? It seems like they're, they're going to get it, they're mindful of making it available to us and the public as soon as possible. We could stick it on Friday, but.
Can I comment on that?
Yeah.
I think this is a matter of policy, this doesn't have to do with this particular team, which is doing a great job. This is the expectation for the council going forward. So I would say by 5:30 on, you know, by 5:30 PM on Friday kind of covers the bases.
Well, so I do want to say, I'm not willing to pay overtime to the city staff.
We're all salaried, there's no, there's no overtime.
You're all free.
We're free on Friday.
So you need to call me on the weekends, you're not being voted for.
But, but the staff who puts the agenda together also is salaried.
All salaried.
Oh, okay, then fine, sure. I'm in favor. I don't care.
All right.
Free, that's incredible.
More for the tax dollars. There we go.
So can I clarify that the amendment was changed from noon to 4:00 PM to Friday at 5:30 PM? Is that?
I believe, I suggested by 5:30 on Friday.
Right.
By 5:30 on, PM on Friday.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'll just second it for the record.
Thank you.
All right, so can we vote on the amendment? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay. And now move as amended?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Wonderful. And this is a first reading, so this will come back if Sarah brings us in, talks, I mean, Patty brings this to Sarah and says, no, 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 and we have to restre, we will correct it next week, or in two weeks. So, awesome.
Right.
We'll have it on Thursday. Okay, moving on to Order 282025.
Accept the Special Events Grant from the Maine Office of Tourism to Market the Maine International Film Festival.
Move to adopt.
Great. All right, this one I'm excited about. Michael, you want to come up and?
Yeah, this is out of mine. Michael Hall, Community Development. So I'll tell you a little bit about this grant. This is from the Maine Office of Tourism, and the grant itself, it's called Special Event Grant. And it's basically to market a community's signature event to help increase tourism in overnight stays within a certain community. I submitted an application and put together sort of a marketing strategy for one of Waterville's biggest events, which happens to be the Maine International Film Festival, which is a 10-day festival. It's now going on its 28th year. And so part of the strategy would be to target larger urban centers, particularly like Boston, and hopefully shine a light on that event and bring people up so that they stay in overnight accommodations up here in Waterville and spend more money.
Yeah.
And I'm really excited about this grant in particular, because they only award two per year, two different communities, so we won out over dozens of others.
Excellent. Great job.
Nice work.
Any questions? Okay, all those in favor? Opposed? All right, wonderful. And with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.